A few items to accommodate attendance here. But I will call to order the common council meeting of Tuesday, February first, two thousand and twenty-two. Happy February, everyone, and I will ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Alder Heck.
Here.
Alder Heck is present. Aldo Lemer.
Here.
Aldo Lemer is present. Vice President Martin is excused. Aldo Miazze.
Present.
Aldo Miazze is present. Aldo Revier.
Here.
Aldo Revier is present. Aldo Vitiver.
Present.
Aldo Vitiver is present. Aldo Wihelya. I do see Aldo Wihelya, so.
Here.
Oh, thank you very much. Aldo is present. President Abbas.
Present.
President Abbas is present. Aldo Alboroz.
Here.
Aldo Alboroz is present. Aldo Benford.
Present.
Aldo Benford is present. Aldo Bennett is excused. Aldo Carter.
Aldo Bennett is here.
Yes. Oh, I apologize, Aldo Bennett. Thank you. Aldo Bennett is present. Aldo Carter.
Present.
Aldo Carter is present. Aldo Conklin.
Present.
Aldo Conklin is present. Aldo Curry.
Here.
Aldo Curry is present. Aldo Evers.
Here.
Aldo Evers is present. Aldo Figaro Cole is excused. Aldo Foster.
Here.
Aldo Foster is present. Aldo Furman.
Present.
Aldo Furman is present. Aldo Halverson.
Present.
Aldo Halverson is present. Aldo Harrington McKinney.
I see Aldo.
Aldo Harrington McKinney is present. Madam Mayor, we have a quorum.
Thank you very much. We will start with just a few things. First of all, just wishing well to all of our colleagues who are either experiencing health issues themselves or in their family, necessitating absence or being here for only part of the meeting. Also, just want to remind us that we're all here to do the work of the city and for all concerned to please try and show some grace to each other and be kind, and in particular for registrants, staff, and alders to refrain from using profanity in your remarks. And with that, I'll ask Aldo Abbas for suspension of the rolls.
Thank you. Move motion to suspend rules two point zero four Order of Business, two point zero five Introduction of Businesses, two point two for ordinance, and two point two for resolutions for items designated on the agenda.
And can I ask perhaps Aldo Carter if you would second, given Aldo Martin's absence?
Second.
Thank you, Aldo Carter. It's been moved and seconded to suspend the rules. Is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor of suspension of the rules? Seeing no objection, those rules are suspended. We have a number of honoring resolutions tonight. We'll start with item one, which is Legis star six nine three seven five, honoring Joe Ryan, and I will hand it over to Aldo Harrington McKinney to read the resolution. I think we'll take it as moved by Harrington McKinney and seconded by Abbas, if that's okay. Aldo Harrington McKinney.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. It is with honor that I read this resolution. Whereas Joe Ryan, Joseph Ryan, we call him Joe, led the formation of the Madison West Neighborhood Association in coordination with other dedicated residents, served as president for five years, and has guided the organization with vision, values, and commitment. And whereas he has been instrumental in building up this important community-serving group into a vibrant, diverse, and vital neighborhood association, sustained by relationships that support the association's mission of promoting social, economic, and civic engagement to foster a community of shared values. And whereas he has guided the creation of community-supporting projects and initiatives that greatly enrich the Madison West Neighborhood Association area, such as the Madison West Farmers Market and Community Day event at Elver Park called West Fest, and a network of volunteers who have devoted heartfelt energy and time to those in need through local nonprofits. And whereas he has built a network of communication and interaction between neighborhoods and the city, county, and state, helping residents gain a greater voice in decisions and plans for development projects, quicker resolutions with local government and services and other related initiatives. And whereas he has fostered partnerships with all neighborhoods in the Madison West area, community centers, nonprofit organizations, schools, businesses, and others to create a welcoming place with rich opportunities where children, families, neighborhoods, and diverse groups can learn, grow, and work toward a healthy and vibrant Madison West neighborhood area. Now therefore be it resolved that the mayor and common council express gratitude for and recognition that Joe Joseph Ryan has made an invaluable contribution to the west side of the city of Madison and the many people who live there or live here who have benefited from being a part of the Neighborhood Association that he led and wish him all the best in the future. So ends the reading.
Thank you, Aldo Harrington McKinney. And we have the honor of being joined by Joe Ryan to receive the resolution tonight. Joe, would you like to say a few words?
Yeah, I just thank you to the council members and the mayor for this. This is a great honor. I know your service is beyond underrated and underappreciated, as well as the toll it takes. So thank you. And thank you for your sacrifices to serve our community. And to be honest, I think most of the thanks should go to my wife. She's always, if I have to go to a event or anything, watching the kids. So thank you to Harmony. But in the end, I would like to thank specifically Aldo McKinney. Aldo McKinney is someone I feel is a true paragon of our city and someone I truly look up to and respect and admire. So it's Aldo McKinney, thank you so much. If it wasn't for you, I don't know if I could have done all this or any of it. So thank you. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe. Appreciate your service. And you're getting at least a partial virtual round of applause from the council. I hope you can see that on the screen. Aldo Alboroz.
Okay, thank you, Madam Mayor. It is not every day we get to have two awesome leaders from the west side with Joe on the line, and then we got Sheree Wallace here. So it's hello to both of you. Thanks for being here. I just wanted to speak briefly about the resolution for Joe Ryan. Thank you so much, Joe. It's been really awesome to get to know you the last few years in the capacity as an alder and working with you with Aldo McKinney, having several Saturdays of coffee and donuts talking about neighborhood stuff. So just wanted to acknowledge your leadership and your efforts and really wishing you the best in the next chapter. So thanks a lot.
Thank you, Aldo. It's been moved and seconded. Is there further discussion on the resolution? I should note also that Brenda Gonzalez of District nineteen is registered in support. Seeing no further discussion, is there any objection to recording a unanimous vote in favor? Seeing no objection, we'll record that unanimous vote, and thank you again, Joe, for your contributions to our city. Right. It will take us to item two, which is Legis star six nine four seven seven, congratulating WSUM on their twentieth anniversary. And in this case, without objection, I think we'll take it as moved by Aldo Bennett and seconded by Aldo Foster. And I will turn to Aldo Bennett to read the resolution.
Well, cool. Well, it is with my great honor to read this resolution. Whereas WSUM ninety-one point five, ninety-one point seven FM successfully went on air on February second, two thousand and two, at two twenty-two P M after a series of legal battles over its placement of a radio tower and after five different stations attempted to achieve success on campus between the years of nineteen fifty-two and nineteen ninety-three. And whereas WSUM has trained multiple generations of students in the field of broadcast journalism and programming with over two thousand alumni, more than two hundred current D Js, and seventeen student leaders. And whereas WSUM, as a proud and active member of the Wisconsin Broadcasters Association, College Broadcasters, Inc., and the intercollegiate broadcasting system, has gained recognition at the statewide and national level for its dynamic music and talk programming, live sports broadcasts, news coverage, as well as their website and social media presence. And whereas WSUM is home to one of the most widely recognized students' sports talk departments in the nation, which has aired award-winning coverage of three consecutive Rose Bowls and back-to-back N C double A tournaments and continues to broadcast over one hundred Badger games each year. And whereas WSUM has brought notable student groups, including The White Stripes, Andrew W K and Whitney to the city of Madison through concert series like Party in the Park and Snake on the Lake Fest, as well as to airwaves via the legendary long-running show Live at WSUM. And whereas WSUM's nonprofit group, Friends of Madison Student Radio, plays an integral role, integral part in supporting the burgeoning careers of broadcasters by funding generous scholarships awarded to driven and deserving WSUM students. And whereas WSUM has thrived under the thoughtful guidance and fearless leadership of founding member and inaugural general manager Dave Black, who embarks on his well-earned retirement after twenty-six years at the helm. And whereas WSUM continues to be a shining example of the Wisconsin idea through their product, through their production and delivery of high-quality radio programming for both the Madison area and its online community, serving the public's essential need to discuss ideas and opinions, providing cultural enrichment, intellectual stimulation, and intelligent enlightening entertainment. Now therefore be it resolved that the Madison Common Council and the mayor congratulate WSUM on their twentieth anniversary of broadcasting and wish them continued success in being the quote-unquote snake on the lake. And that ends the reading. As a point of personal privilege, I just would love to congratulate WSUM. My personal experience with you has been overwhelmingly positive, and I'm glad that you all are on campus.
Thank you, Aldo Bennett. And we're joined by Kelsey Brannon to accept this honoring resolution. Kelsey?
Thank you so much. Good evening. My name is Kelsey Brannon. I am the director of radio at the University of Wisconsin-Madison. I'm representing WSUM Madison Student Radio tonight. And I just wanted to take a moment to thank the council for their recognition of WSUM's twentieth anniversary. WSUM is the only student voice on the airwaves in Madison. We're an integral part of the UW-Madison community. And of course, we broadcast from campus, but we also take very seriously our legal responsibility as defined by the FCC to serve our listening area, which encompasses the greater Madison community. So that commitment is paramount to our three-part mission, which is to act in a service and outreach capacity for the people of Madison, to provide an educational broadcast environment for students, and to provide an alternative source of information and entertainment to our community. Twenty years is a milestone for any radio station, but it's particularly impressive at the college radio format. And as one of the largest college radio stations in the country, WSUM has grown exponentially in the last twenty years. We now reach over a hundred and eighty-three listeners worldwide. So we provide a platform to share the best news, arts, and culture that Madison has to offer with the entire world. So we would like to share WSUM with you. Just wanted to make it known that the station is open to the public for tours, and we'd love to show you our world-class studios on campus. You can email traffic at wsun.org to schedule a tour. We are really proud to be a part of and serve the community that is represented by this council, and we're honored by this recognition of our twentieth year on the air and the retirement of our founding general manager, Dave Black. So on behalf of WSUM Madison Student Radio, thank you so much.
Thank you, and you're getting a virtual round of applause as well. Congratulations on twenty years. That is really an accomplishment. So it's been moved and seconded. Is there any objection to recording a unanimous vote in favor? Seeing no objection, we'll record that vote, and thank you again. Congratulations. And we'll move on to item three, which is Legis star six nine five six five in support of Madison's Jewish community. And President Abbas, can I get a motion, please?
Yes, move motion to adopt.
Second to adopt.
Moved and seconded to adopt, and it's my honor to read this resolution. Whereas on January fifteenth of two thousand and twenty-two, a man held Jewish worshippers in Colleyville, Texas synagogue hostage for eleven hours. And whereas we stand in solidarity with the congregation Beth Israel community in Colleyville and the entire Jewish community. And whereas, according to the Anti-Defamation League's most recent audit of antisemitic incidents, quote, assault, harassment, and vandalism against Jewish people remain at near historic levels in the U S, end quote. And whereas this pattern of violence against Jewish peoples includes the two thousand and eighteen attack on the Tree of Life synagogue in Pittsburgh, Pennsylvania, where eleven worshippers were killed, and a deadly antisemitic attack on a congregation in Poe, California, the following year. And whereas the incident on January fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-two is a reminder that we must continue to educate ourselves, speak out against, and prevent antisemitism and hate locally, nationally, and globally. And whereas everyone has the right to pray and practice religion safely. And whereas the city of Madison is committed to a safe, inclusive, and just society. And whereas a safe, inclusive, and just city has no place for hate against specific groups. Now therefore be it resolved that the city of Madison mayor and common council condemn antisemitism, discrimination, racism, hate, and violence, and stand in solidarity with our Jewish community members. And be it further resolved, the city of Madison mayor and common council affirm our commitment to creating a safe, inclusive, and just city where religious groups are able to practice their religion freely and safely. And be it still further resolved that the city of Madison mayor and common council make clear that Madison must be free of antisemitic actions and a place where we are committed to supporting the wellness of our Jewish neighbors. And be it finally resolved that the city of Madison mayor and common council stand in solidarity with our Jewish community as we strive to make our city a safe, inclusive, and equitable place for all. And with us tonight to accept this honoring resolution is Rabbi Beich. Rabbi, would you like to say a few words?
Thank you. Good evening, friends. I really want to thank you on behalf of an anxious and yet determined Jewish community for these supportive words and actions tonight. I'm Jonathan Beich, and I have the privilege of serving Temple Beth El here in Madison. I've been here for sixteen and a half years. I also want to recognize, I think among the spectators tonight might be Alan Klugman, who is the executive director of the Jewish Federation of Madison and umbrella co-ordinative body for Madison's Jewish community, someone who works very closely on these matters. The horrific specter of psychological violence and possible death stemming from the Colleyville synagogue hostage-taking haunts us, both as both members of a religious minority and Americans who have for hundreds of years sought to become equal citizens of this nation. This terrible incident, I think, identifies a larger need, which is to double down on the struggle for equality, especially for those members of minority groups that experience prejudice and discrimination on a regular basis. When our first-century sage Rabbi Hillwell said that the greatest commandment of our tradition is that whatever is hateful to you do not do to anyone else, he also, I think, was speaking in broad terms. At this moment, for example, I consider our fellow Americans of Asian or Pacific Islander heritage who could face bigotry and violence during celebrations of a new lunar year. I consider also upcoming observances of Black History Month, and I see that just yesterday, a number of historically black colleges and universities received bomb threats. And we know that members of the LGBTQ community face continuing discrimination and violence because simply of who they are or whom they choose to love. These incidents of hatred and others that we are all familiar with in this diverse common council must not go unanswered, and that is why we are pleased and comforted by your response. At a time when we have found vaccines to the pandemic coronavirus that has infected our world, we must also actively manufacture antidotes to the social toxicities that poison our society. We need an antidote to the silos we each exist in. If it's natural to pay more attention to ourselves than to others, let us struggle against that centrifugal force and reach out to those in need. We need to create an antidote to the deafening silence that we hear at moments, as the one you addressed through this wonderful resolution. We need to write letters to the editor, contact local and national elected leaders, and demonstrate to our children that we will not tolerate injustice and bigotry. And we also must design an antidote to forgetfulness. The lessons of human history, witness the prejudicial and human crimes of the Jim Crow South or Nazi Germany or modern-day China and Myanmar, they instruct us to be vigilant against human prejudice and instead to elevate human dignity. That is why your action tonight is an important step in the process of the eradication and addressing of prejudice. Thank you for your energies. Thank you for being conscientious in your approach. And thank you for your foresight in being part of that moral arc that bends toward justice. Stay healthy and be well.
Thank you, Rabbi. And we do, in fact, have Alan, I presume it's Alan Klugman, registered in support, as is Rabbi Betsy Forrester. It has been moved and seconded. Is there any objection to recording a unanimous vote in favor? Seeing no objection, we'll record that unanimous vote. And we'll move on to item four, which is Legis star six nine five six eight, recognizing February two thousand and twenty-two as Black History Month in the city of Madison. And President Abbas, a motion, please?
Move motion to adopt.
Second to adopt.
Moved and seconded, and to start the reading, I'll turn it over to Aldo Carter.
Thank you, Mayor. Whereas to commemorate and celebrate the contribution to our nation made by people of black descent, American historian Carter G. Woodson established Black History Week nearly a century ago, and.
Whereas the event was first celebrated
Whereas the event was first celebrated during the second week of February 1926 and subsequently expanded to a month in 1976 during the nation's bicentennial. And whereas the theme of Black History Month for 2022 is Black Health and Wellness, focusing on the activities, rituals, and initiatives that black communities have done to be well. And...
Alder Wahili, you're muted.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Whereas the theme for 2022 explores the legacy of black scholars, medical practitioners, grassroots organizers, societies, and other groups and individuals who have impacted black health and wellness, offering aid, building hospitals, clinics, and medical and nursing schools, and combating economic, health, and racial disparities experienced by black communities, among other accomplishments. And... Alda McKinney.
To health and wellness, including those in Madison, such as, but not limited to, black women's wellness, carousue, all things Alzheimer's, cultural recovery option for families, ease of mind, mental health solutions, Meadowwood Health Partnership, and...
And whereas, through these efforts, activism, education, and more, modern-day black health and wellness continues to fight against healthcare inequities and has expanded beyond physical well-being to include the mental and emotional support of black individuals and communities in Madison and beyond.
Alder, we can't hear you.
You know, this mute button is really getting on my nerves today. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Mayor and Madison Common Council recognizes February 2022 as Black History Month in the city of Madison and around the United States. Be it finally resolved that the city encourage the celebration of this month by inviting all residents in the city to learn more about black health and wellness to better understand the varied and rich history and experiences of black Americans and how they have shaped our nation.
Thank you, Alders, and we have a number of people here to receive the resolution. Alder Carter, is there any particular order you wanted to go in?
No, you can just go down the list.
Thank you, Alder. So I see that we have Shere Wallace with us. Shere, did you want to say a few words?
Yes. I am honored to receive this resolution for black health and wellness. Black history is a time of rejoicing, celebrating about integrity, leadership, and determination, which I model my work to act in. And to receive this resolution on such a highly recognized month means a lot because I work hard for the community I serve. I'm so grateful for the trust that I've built with my community that has allowed me to advocate, listen, teach, and help them through uncertain times. I have had many people that have paved the way for me to help others. In Dan County Public Health, Kim Nuschel and Jessica Leclerc, Michael Bruce from Joining Forces for Families allowed me to do my internship. Greg Michaels from the Madison Public Library allowed me to have my community health located in the public library. UW Health, Annie Baka, Shiva Bedair, Robin Langton, they have played a crucial part in making a difference in our community by supporting Meadowwood Health Partnership since I announced my opening at Meadowridge Library. I am thankful for the Meadowwood Association, the entire board, Ken Loving for recognizing my addition, and Brenda Gonzalez for allowing CPP space at the Southwest Madison Partnership Office. For you, Mayor, and the Common Council, thank you for recognizing Meadowwood Health Partnership.
Thank you, Shere, and thank you for all the great work that you do in our community. And I hope you see the round of applause that you're getting here. Next, I think Jaclyn Hunt, would you like to say a few words, Jaclyn? You're muted, Jaclyn, let's see.
Yes, thank you. I also would like to thank you all for thinking of me as it relates to mental health and substance abuse and overall wellness for persons, especially blacks, in our community. I've been blazing my own trail in the mental health and substance abuse field since my own early recovery in 1994. I was arrested and incarcerated, basically because I was experiencing post-traumatic stress disorder and was self-medicating. But in doing so, in recovering, I have stayed true to who I am as a person. At the core, I'm a good-hearted, generous, caring, and compassionate person. And in my own little corner of the world, here in this big old world, I've created a path to provide culturally relevant and culturally sensitive mental health and substance abuse services. I found it very difficult early on to assist individuals with mental health or substance abuse issues when their basic needs and basic human rights weren't being met. I realized that these individuals deserve to have someone speaking on their behalf, someone who believed in them, and someone who saw the potential that they possessed. I believe that if I were able to partner with them, walk alongside them, and to have them see the potential that I saw in them, help them secure resources to get those basic needs met, that we could then work on some of the other emotional wellness issues that were present. I never turn people away simply because they don't have money. I merely get the job done, and I've been very, very humbled to walk along some amazing people here in our community. I do appreciate this recognition and this resolution because I know that my role early on at Journey Mental Health Center was one that gave other blacks in our community permission to come to Journey Mental Health Center. And sharing my own testimony of overcoming my own drug addiction and my own emotional unrest also gave others permission to acknowledge, recognize, and start their own journeys. So I'm not done yet. I still think God has more work for me to do. I'm still humbled each and every day that I get to serve people in our community. And I never saw myself as a trailblazer, but in hindsight, I guess that's exactly what I did. I blazed the trail. So I'm thankful and I appreciate this resolution, and I'm humbled to serve this community with my girl Shere and others. And yeah, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. You're also getting a round of applause. Thank you for your service to our community.
You're very welcome.
And now I think we have Sadat Abiri with us. Would you like to say a few words? You're muted currently. There you go.
Okay, all right, good. All right, thank you. I thank the council and the mayor for the recognition today. I love what I do. Like Jackie, I started that journey 32 years ago as a student. And as a student, I found the need for minority representation. There were no minorities. When I was there, I may barely know one or two blacks in that organization. So I went on to become a nurse practitioner, which I truly love what I do. I believe I'm the first black to have a private practice. I prescribe medications, and what I continue to find is when minorities come to me and find how much they can identify with me, really, they are so open to the treatment. And I hear more stories of people telling me, instead of prescribing, they want me to listen, they want me to hear their journey, they feel somebody is listening to them. Finally, somebody get me. It's not just somebody trying to shove medications to me. For that reason and many more, I truly love what I do. We need so many more minorities in this field, and especially now with COVID. Pre-COVID, one out of four people have some type of mental illness. And now we all know with COVID, the isolation is being so much worse. So for that reason, I feel so honored to be in this field, and I don't see me doing anything else. Thank you again for the honor of recognizing what we do today.
Thank you, and thanks for your service to our community. You are also getting a virtual round of applause. And I think that is everyone we have with us tonight. So it has been moved and seconded. Is there any objection to recording a unanimous vote in favor? Seeing no objection, we'll record that unanimous vote. And that brings us to item five, which is early public comment. We do have one early public commenter, Paul Nodler of Maple Bluff. And just a reminder, please tell us what item you're commenting on before you start.
Yeah, hi. I just want to say first, can you hear me okay?
We can.
Thank you. First of all, thank you, Mayor, and Common Council, and congratulations and empathy with all of the people who got honors today. My background is philosophy. I love empathy, and it's so important. That's why I'm speaking about the importance of nature to human empathy for other beings and other living things, other people and other living things. I just wanted to start by saying a tiny bit of my background. I helped coordinate Madison Fund for the last 10 years, working with Parks and about 25 partner groups, more than 25 partner groups now, and over 100 volunteers to do 120 nature outings in urban natural areas and parks year-round. We have two coming up this weekend. I'll be leading one of them. These are free, welcoming, outgoing outings with diverse, family-friendly, kid-friendly nature outings that connects people with nature in their neighborhoods, and that is the mission of FUN, Friends of Urban Nature, connecting communities with kids in their nearby neighborhoods. Hence the item I'm speaking on tonight, which is items six and items 76. The request, I'll go right into it. Oh, I wanted to say also, thank you for prioritizing housing in the area up here, especially the up-not-out housing that's happening along Abert Avenue. Much needed. We just don't want to see it on the historic natural area. Prioritizing item 76 should be done to approve CN zoning for the 16-acre Wetman Natural Area Public Park. This needs to be done before considering Agenda Item Six and other AMSAT rezoning. And I'd like to specifically say, please vote no on Agenda Item Six. The Plan Commission voted no only a few days ago, on January 24th, to a proposed piecemeal rezoning of part of the AMSAT area and within this part projected for CN zoning based on current zoning. It shouldn't happen based on current zoning. We need to adopt the CN first. The strong public-supported and AMSAT plan-approved recommendation for CN zoning needs to be adopted first in order to clearly establish boundaries, protect the Wetman, and help reduce confusion and contention about surrounding rezoning proposals, boundaries, and regulations. I'd like to say we don't need Groundhog Day here. We'd like to settle the zoning on that, and that will help settle a lot of other discussions, I think. It follows the city parks and planning recommendation of pairing a conservation park for passive recreation paired with a sister park at Demetral, which has a dog park and other active facilities. I personally have walked for over 10 years and helped document over 120 species of birds, resident nesting sandhull cranes, a fox family, even an osprey and a river otter, which are indicators of the potential for this area, and actually even today. I often saw standing water with ducks flooding the Fox Building back parking lot. Things were built right up to it, and we don't need to be rezoning the little pieces that are left, especially when they're already flooding. And the developers, I think, are doing them a favor to say, let's make it clear, let's look at the wetland delineations and look at the projected flood zone that I know there's something coming out on. It's not the... Pardon me?
That is time.
That's your time, Paul.
Thank you very much. Please prioritize the CN zoning.
Thank you. And that is it for early public comment. So we'll go to the consent agenda. President Abbas?
At this time, consent agenda will be moved with the recommended action listed for each item except number one item which have registrants wishing to speak, number two item which require an extraordinary roll call vote and are not included on the consent agenda by unanimous consent, number three items which other persons have separated out for discussion and debate purposes. Agenda item number six to 12 are public hearing items. The following items are extra majority items. Extra majority vote items will be recorded as unanimous votes unless a roll call or exclusion is requested. Agenda item number 47, Legislative File Number 68974, amending the 2022 capital budget, accepting the Lake Minona waterfront design challenge process, and establishing a Lake Minona waterfront. Adha committee required 15 votes. Agenda item number 54, Legislative File Number 69270, amending the 2022 water utility capital budget to include $0.5 million for additional budget authority for four proposed operational pressure zone for residency projects citywide, various orders. Recommended action is 15 votes. Agenda item number 56, Legislative File Number 69335, amending Traffic Engineering's 2022 capital budget to include the funding for the traffic signal installation in Henry Street in West Washington Avenue, requires 15 votes. Agenda item part of the concern agenda with additional recommendation as noted. Agenda item number 36, Legislative File Number 69287, approving plans and specification and authorizing the Board of Public Works to advertise and receive bids for MPD East Fencing Project. And we refer to Board of Public Works from on February 16, 2022, and back to Common Council February 22nd, and reason for refer is design is being reevaluated and possibly updated. Then Agenda item number 59, Legislative File Number 69360, substitute approval for Imagination Center at Randall Park operating plan as outlined in 2022 budget amendment number three. Report from the Finance Committee recommendation action is referred to the March 1st Common Council meeting, and the reason for referral is to allow for more time to provide detail about the plan. Then Agenda item number 85, Legislative File Number 69478, authorizing and delegating authority to the city engineer to obtain a temporary SS permit for the Wisconsin Department Transportation for Storm and Sanitary Server maintenance along the John Nolan Drive and Railroad Corridor. An introduction of, it will be referred, and recommended action is back to Common Council on 2/22/2022. Agenda item number 86, Legislative File Number 69481, authorizing the mayor and chief of police to accept a financial year 2021 US Department of Justice cops office cops hiring program, grandfather purpose of hiring six police officers to help the department enhance and improve upon the existing legitimacy and trust-building efforts in the community. And any local funding match requirement and final acceptance of the grant will be determined during the 2023 operating budget process. Introduction for new business and referral without debate. Recommended action is back to council on two-twenty-two. Agenda item number ninety, legislative file number six-nine-five-one-eight, amending the City of Madison official map to establish map reservation for future street and highways in City of Madison to connect Shopko Drive and Pancrat Streets, consistent with the recommendation in the adopted Oscar Mayer Special Area Plan. Introduction for new business. Recommended action is to back to council on March fifteenth. Agenda item number ninety-one, legislative file number six-nine-five-one-nine, amending the City of Madison official map to establish map reservation for future street and highways in the City of Madison, consistent with recommendation in the adopted Oscar Mayer Special Area Plan. Introduction for new business for referral without debate. And recommended action is back to council on March fifteenth. And next is agenda item number ninety-two, legislative file number six-nine-five-four-five, revising the fiscal note for resolution twenty-one zero-zero-one-nine-six, legislative file number six-four-four-zero-one, Ninth Aldermanic District. This is for introduction of new business, referral without debate. Recommended action is back to council on February twenty-second. Agenda item number ninety-five, legislative file number six-nine-five-seven-seven, public hearing new license, C-Rom Retail Three LLC. Introduction for new business for referral without debate to clerk office. Recommended action is to come back to the council on March first. Agenda item number ninety-six, legislative file number six-nine-five-eight-three, license transfer five-zero-two, State Street LLC. This is for introduction of new business for referral without any debate to clerk office. And recommended action is back to council on March first, twenty-twenty-two. Next is additional agenda item with recommendation made from the floor. Agenda item number thirty-nine, legislative file number six-nine-two-three-five, creating section two-point-zero-five of the Madison General Ordinance to specify procedure related to consent agenda. Recommended action from Common Council Executive Committee is to adopt. Agenda item number forty, legislative file number six-nine-two-seven-one, amending section two-point-zero-four and two-point-nine of Madison General Ordinance is to change the order of business and procedures for registered speakers. And recommended action is from Common Council Executive Committee to adopt. Item requested for exclusions. Agenda item number sixty-eight, legislative file number six-eight-nine-seven-seven, a resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to enter into a multi-year competitively selected service contract with IBI Group for project management service for metro transit technology upgrades. Next is agenda item number seventy, legislative file number six-eight-nine-seven-six, a resolution authorizing the mayor and the city clerk to enter into multi-year competitively selected service contract with HNTB Corporation for construction management service for the east-west bus rapid transit. Next is agenda item number ninety, legislative file number six-nine-five-one-eight, amending the City of Madison official map to establish map reservations for future streets and highways in the City of Madison to connect Shopko Drive, Pancrat Street, consistent with recommendations in the adopted Oscar Mayer Special Area Plan. This is introduction for business for referrals without debate. Then, agenda item number ninety-one, legislative file number six-nine-five-one-nine, amending the City of Madison official map to establish map reservation for future streets and highway in City of Madison, consistent with recommendations in the adopted Oscar Mayer Special Area Plan. Introduction for new business for referral without any debate. Both agenda item ninety and ninety-one is referred to TPPB Transportation Policy Planning Board.
Right. Are there additional exclusions? Alder Foster?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to recuse myself from items fifty-seven and fifty-eight, please.
We'll note that Alder Foster needs to be recused from items fifty-seven and fifty-eight. Just pausing to make sure the clerk got that. Yep. All right. Thank you, Alder. Are there other items for exclusion or other disclosures or recusals on consent agenda items? Seeing none. Let me just quickly go through again then. Items six through twelve are public hearing items. Items forty-seven, fifty-four, and fifty-six are extra-majority items. On items thirty-six, the motion is to re-refer to the Board of Public Works. On fifty-nine, to re-refer to the three-one council meeting. On eighty-five, let's see, we have a number of introductions that we're adding referrals on. So that's eighty-five and eighty-six, ninety-two, ninety-five, and ninety-six. The recommendation on thirty-nine is to adopt. Also, on forty is to adopt. And then we'll be excluding from the consent agenda items sixty-eight, seventy, ninety, and ninety-one. Also note that we have one registrant on item fifty-nine opposed but not wishing to speak. And I will just quickly refresh to make sure that there are no updates to that. Yep. So that's the consent agenda. President Abbas will move that. Is there a second? Alda Carter is speaking, I believe she's seconding that.
Yes, second.
Thank you, Alda Carter. All right. So the consent agenda is moved and seconded. Is there any objection to recording a unanimous vote in favor of the consent agenda? Seeing no objection, we'll record that vote. And we will move on to our public hearing items, starting with report of the Plan Commission. And item six, which is Legisdar six-eight-six-three-nine, I'll open a public hearing on creating sections of the Madison General Ordinances to change the zoning of property located at ten-seventeen North Sherman Avenue from Industrial General to Commercial Corridor Transitional. On item six, we have registrants. We will start with Beth Sloyes of District Eighteen, to be followed by Lance Green.
Good evening and thank you. Wetland overlay considerations on this project need to include a similar process that's been used in other precedent-setting land rezoning efforts. Rezoning efforts of land not located in an environmental corridor, and that is within a wetland overlay district, show that decision-makers use the legal delineation report recommendations for resource protection setbacks. We have a legal delineation, and it contains the delineator's recommendations. I request that a resource protection setback of thirty feet be required. We do this to protect public health and safety in an area the city has recognized as one that floods on its stormwater flood risk map. It's not clear who owns the small unplatted piece of the two thousand and seven Roth Street parcel yet zoned IGW, and how it has been legally assigned or conveyed, as it shows on the assessor's website that it's still part of the twenty-nine-acre parcel owned by Kraft Heinz. There's been no conveyance. If a land contract is in place, then Kraft still holds the title. The current CCT zoned parcel allows the new owner to build out the existing facility with a main-level commercial space, an apartment, and the basement level with various rooms and parking area. This facility has a history of basement flooding and months of standing water in the lower parking lot behind the building in the wetland. Ducks swim here. A small portion of the two thousand and seven Roth parcel that is still zoned IGW could remain as IGW until the sixteen acres designated for green space in the OMSAP, the Oscar Mayer Special Area Plan, is rezoned for CN for a conservation park area. Then it could be rezoned CN as well. This is in keeping with the Special Area Plan future land use designations. The shared or adjusted boundary issues are unclear, with state law needing to be considered, as this appears to involve three adjacent landowners and two land boundaries, all adjusting their property lines or sharing them, rather than focusing on doing a legal subdivision. This area was once home to indigenous people and a known burial site area. As we look to conserve the sixteen acres, so too can we look to protecting an unsurveyed archaeological area within most of the borders of the twenty-nine acres at Roth Street. We owe this to our Ho-Chunk neighbors. We took the first good step when we raised the flag over Bascom Hall, recently witnessed the discovery of an ancient canoe in Lake Mendota, and so too need to do the discovery in this area as well. We protect our gravesites and respect our deceased family members. Now it is time to offer the same respect to our brothers and sisters of the Ho-Chunk Nation, a good second step. We need to be sure that we do no harm when considering any development in this area. We have an amazing opportunity to focus on how we can protect our resources, both natural and cultural. I thank you for your time this evening and for all the work you do for the City of Madison.
Thank you. Our next registrant is Lance Green of District Fifteen.
Hello, and thank you very much. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you so much. And thank you so much for your wonderful service to our city, Mayor. I'm just going to say, I've been forty years in my home, a couple of blocks from Stark Weather Creek. And I'm retired from the DNR. I serve on the Sustainable Madison Committee and the Friends of Stark Weather Creek Board. I'm going to speak tonight briefly to the importance of preserving any remaining natural areas in our city as best as we can, not only to preserve the nature itself and the services we are provided by that nature, but also to preserve a natural experience and the opportunity for those experiences in local neighborhood areas all over the city as best as we can. We know how much these kinds of natural experiences are important, as has been emphasized by Paul Noldner and previously. And I ask the council to act too strongly to preserve the Hartmeyer Natural Area. Sure, the sixteen acres of wetland and upland that have already been spoken of, that needs to be, of course, conservation zone with CN zoning in it. And I certainly support any other efforts to have that area be a wonderful park space for the area people and for the nature itself. As you've heard, there can be quite a bit of nature in that area. So I thank you again very much, and I thank also the Friends of Hartmeyer for helping make all this happen. That's it.
Thank you. We also have registered Joan Bell Call of District Eighteen and David Bierman, also of District Eighteen, available to answer questions. Joan is the lead for Madison Next Door's Environmental/Nature and Wildlife Group. Are there questions for any of our registrants? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing on item six. President Abbas, a motion?
Yes, move motion to re-refer to Plan Commission's February seven meeting.
Second to re-refer.
Moved and seconded to re-refer to the Plan Commission. Is there any objection to recording a unanimous vote in favor of re-referral? Seeing no objection, that item is referred. Will take us to item number seven, which is Legisdar six-eight-six-four-seven. Open a public hearing on creating sections of the Madison General Ordinances to rezon property located at five-eleven South Ingersoll Street. We have no registrants on item seven. We'll close the public hearing, President Abbas.
Move motion to adopt with conditions.
Second to adopt with conditions.
Moved and seconded to adopt with conditions. Is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor? Seeing no objection, we'll record that vote. Takes us to the report of the Alcohol License Review Committee and item eight, which is Legisdar six-nine-one-two-six. I'll open a public hearing on a new license for Sunflower Double Ten LLC, doing business as Double Ten Mini Hot Pot. We have no registrants on item eight. I'll close that public hearing, President Abbas.
Move motion to grant.
Second to grant.
Moved and seconded to grant. Is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor? Seeing no objection, we'll record that vote. Item nine is Legisdar six-nine-one-three-two. I'll open a public hearing on a new license for Eden Nails and Spa LLC. On item nine, we have no registrants. I will close that public hearing, President Abbas.
Move motion to grant with conditions.
Second to grant with conditions.
Moved and seconded. Is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor? Seeing no objection, that is granted with conditions. Item ten is Legisdar six-nine-one-three-seven. I'll open a public hearing on a new license for the International. On item ten, we have no registrants. I will recess that public hearing, President Abbas.
Move motion to re-refer.
Second to re-refer.
Is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor of re-referral? Seeing none, that item is re-referred. Item eleven is Legisdar six-nine-one-three-eight. I'll open a public hearing on a new license for Pine Branch Holding LLC, doing business as Mom's Bar. We have no registrants on item eleven. I will close that public hearing, President Abbas.
Move motion to grant with conditions.
Second to grant with condition.
Moved and seconded. Is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor? Seeing no objection, that item is granted with conditions. That takes us to the report of the Board of Public Works and item twelve, which is Legisdar six-nine-two-three-two. Open a public hearing on approving plans, specifications, and a schedule of assessments for the resurfacing 2022 Assessment District. On item twelve, we have no registrants. I will close that public hearing, President Abbas.
Move motion to adopt.
Second to adopt.
Moved and seconded to adopt. Is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor? Seeing no objection, that vote will be recorded, and that is the end of our public hearing items. So that will take us to item sixty-eight. Give me a minute to get to the appropriate page. Item sixty-eight is Legisdar six-eight-nine-seven-seven, resolution authorizing the mayor and clerk to enter into a multi-year competitively selected service contract with IBI Group for project management services for Metro Transit's technology upgrade. President Abbas, a motion, please?
Motion to adopt.
Second to adopt.
Moved and seconded to adopt. On item sixty-eight, are there questions for staff? Seeing Alder Wihile.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I excluded this item as I want more information in term of the selection process, the selecting service contract with the Canadian-based international company, IBI Group, for this project of the hauling infrastructure used by the transit. So I seen the project will be comprised of two solicitation with budget of ten to fifteen million, with phase implementation of 2022 to 2024. And internal stakeholders of City of Madison are vendors, contract negotiation and support, project and contract management support, requirement and compliance tracking, design and documentation review, implementation and acceptance testing, and standard operating procedures and adoption. So I just want to get some updates of how So I just want to get some updates of how, number one, what's this company, IBI Group? What was the process that was selected? And was there any, I don't know if I can say this, but, you know, what other partners within the City of Madison, other department like DCR, Department of Civil Rights in term of the contract, were they involved? Was there any rest analysis done? So all these are the questions. I would like to get some answers, if that's okay with this staff.
Thank you, Alder. Our Transit Director, Stuenberg, is here with us.
Yeah, good evening. So yes, this was a federally funded, this is a federally funded project, and so it's a federally funded procurement. Therefore, it does go through a very specific set of requirements around what's called disadvantaged business enterprise process, including setting a goal for subcontracting and all of that. In this case, this type of contract is really for a couple individuals to assist for over a three-year period. And so there were no, the analysis that DCR went through identified that there was no, not really any subcontract opportunities. And so therefore, by federal procurement rules, there is no DBE goal to be allowed to be set. And so I guess to answer your question, yes, it did go through a rigorous DCR process, but ultimately the IBI is the sole vendor here, and there would not be any subcontractors. This is a, and there were, you know, several other proposers as well in this case, but ultimately IBI was the selected vendor in this process. Again, this is a very specific skillset of vendors who have experience implementing transit technology projects. And so there's not a lot of, there's not a lot of vendors out there who can do that and who have that experience because it is a specific set of skills and a very unique application compared to some other general IT projects. So that's really what we're looking for in this solicitation.
And my other follow-up question is if there are more international organizations, and I've seen they have 27 other states, but not presence in Wisconsin, how will that project affect their presence being not in Wisconsin?
Yeah, so they, you know, the majority of the work would be done remotely. They would be working with us, but also with our technology vendor, who will hopefully in the next couple of months be coming to you for that contract award. You know, that contract vendor is out of state as well, and so, you know, they'll be working closely with them as well as us, you know, doing most of the work via Zoom, but coming here from time to time, perhaps on a monthly basis as needed, especially when we're rolling out equipment installs and things like that on buses and in the facilities.
And are there any other local organization that are, they partner with that can do the work if not so much from remote?
No, so this contract is just for the project management piece. The vendor, the technology vendor, when we bring that contract to you, that does have a DBE goal, a disadvantaged business goal, and that vendor has partnered with a local firm to do the physical installation of the equipment on the buses here. But, you know, on this project management contract, there is no local resource that replied to this that met our specifications.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm complete.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Harington, any questions?
Yes, I just want to make sure that I was clear in what I heard. There, when you made the statement, there was no subcontracting opportunities. Could you clarify what that meant? I think I heard it in discourse with Alder Wahili, but I just want to make sure that I did hear it. And you also mentioned that there was a specific subset that was required. And so because all of those things were taken into consideration, there was no opportunity for anyone to compete. Am I off track, or did I hear that correctly? Could you step back, please?
Sure, so partially. So the federal procurement rules are very explicit, and they basically trump everything that, you know, all of our local requirements. And so we do have to follow those federal requirements. That includes setting a disadvantaged business enterprise goal. However, as part of that goal-setting process, you have to go through a process to see, is it logical for a vendor to subcontract to other vendors as part of this contract? I, are there parts of this project that could be first off and given to a smaller disadvantaged business? In the process of that, DCR identified that, no, that for this particular contract, there is no logical piece that could be sorted out and given to a separate vendor. And so per federal requirements, then, if it doesn't meet the standards of being able to have subcontractors, then it cannot set this DBE goal. So that's the first part of it. And the second part, there were competitive bids or proposals. There were multiple proposals we received. This was not a sole source. However, none of those were local vendors. They were all out-of-state companies with substantial experience in implementing transit technology projects.
Okay, thank you for the response, because what I heard is that you did go through the processes in terms of who said it or who did not said it, in terms of looking at comparable or possible vendors. And so that's what I really wanted to hear, is that you followed the process, and because you followed the process, this was the end result. Is that, am I clear on that?
Yes.
Okay, all right, then I'm good. Thank you, I'm complete.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Abbas, questions?
Yeah, really quick question about SBE, Small Business Enterprise. I know you hit some of those points. Could you explain a little bit more about what exactly it is and what is city role during that process and how we make sure communities of color are disadvantaged, you know, communities can take advantage? I'm just curious from city point of view. I know you mentioned about federal regulation. I'm curious, what is our role and how much effort we put in this process?
So, yeah, the federal program is called Disadvantaged Business Enterprise, and that comprised, it is comprised of small businesses. I don't remember the exact definition of what defines it as small, but small businesses that are owned by a disadvantaged, a member of a disadvantaged group. So a person of color, a woman, you know, anyone that meets those qualifications could register with the state. The registration is done through the state with the state DOT as a DBE or disadvantaged business enterprise. And then at that point, that is the list that we have to use for federal procurement, and we don't have additional ability to screen vendors at a local level. However, you know, what we can do is encourage vendors who meet those definitions to do that registration with the state and help cultivate those vendors, you know, and to build them up and bring them, get them to a point where they can register and create opportunities for them. You know, I haven't been here long enough to really make much headway on that process, to be honest, and I don't know to what extent that has been done elsewhere in the city, but that definitely is a high priority. I don't think it would change the result in this case, because this is such a specialized skillset that nobody locally has. And so I don't think it would have moved the needle on this, but that is certainly something that we should be and can be focusing on in the future.
No, I appreciate that. The reason I was asking that question is a lot of community of colors, disadvantaged community, and even small vendors, they even don't know how to navigate the system. So if you identified those, as you're mentioning, in future, and perhaps economic development, people can also help connecting those dots and helping them to move forward, so.
Thanks.
Thank you, Alder Abbas. It might be useful, DCR Director Davis isn't with us tonight, but it might be useful for the council to know that under the auspices of our Civil Rights Department, there is a fairly extensive group of staff that are working specifically on contracting equity for the entire city. So these questions are being worked on actively, both in terms of who we reach out to, but also how we break our contracts down into smaller pieces to make them more accessible. And in fact, there's an upcoming event to help facilitate introductions between prime contractors and subcontractors, which I'd certainly encourage Alders to share with your networks to make sure that folks get invited to that. So there is a staff group that is actively working on the question of contracting equity, and at some future date, if folks are interested, I'm sure staff would be happy to share that information with you or do a presentation in the appropriate venue.
Thanks.
Alder Harington, did you have additional questions?
Yes, Mayor, thank you for that clarification, because that's what I was going to circle back to. And I wanted to hear the city's commitment to be able to elevate subcontract to that level where they can compete. And you absolutely nailed that, because that was going to be my follow-up question. And yes, I'm sure that council members, I know certainly I would be interested in making sure that we are tracking and supporting those efforts to elevate minority and small businesses so that they can compete in that arena. And that's one of the things that I discovered when we were doing the Southwest Madison Employment Center, is that we got a subtractor, but really it did take nurturing and helping and being able to bring them to a level where they could actively compete. And so I thank you for bringing that extra knowledge in and to make sure that we stay abreast on how we can support that, because that's certainly something that we, and I'm glad to hear that the city is also interested in elevating. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder Harington, McKinney. It's absolutely a high priority, and I think our Department of Civil Rights is doing a good job on forwarding this in a number of ways. And I will make a note to ask Director Davis to find a venue to give you all an update on that work. Alder Havison, questions?
Yes, Madam Mayor, thank you. Hello, Director Stuenberg. Just a couple of questions. Is this contract, so it's 577,500, not to exceed that amount, is this a certain number of hours that we're getting for this?
Yes, unfortunately, I don't have the exact, that exact spreadsheet in front of me, but yes, so it's basically an hourly contract. So we've kind of estimated the max that it could be at this 577,000, but ultimately we would, you know, spend up to that amount on an hourly basis, based on the actual level of effort that's necessary.
Okay, and then what is the expected deliverables from this?
So they would be basically acting as an extension of staff to manage this project on our behalf in coordination with us. The technology project implementation, you know, when that comes to you will be over $9 million. It's a big technology project across a large set of equipment for us, and it will just be a long, time-consuming process to implement, and so they will be acting as our project management representatives. So there's no specific deliverables other than the ability to deliver the overall technology project.
And we feel it's confident that we're not going to exceed that 577,000, that'll be enough?
I do feel confident in that, yes.
No further questions, Madam Mayor, thanks.
Thank you, Alder. Are there any other questions for staff on this item? Seeing none, it's been moved and seconded. Is there discussion? Seeing no discussion, is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor? Seeing no objection, we'll record a unanimous vote in favor of Item 68 and move on to Item 70, which is Legis 68976. A resolution authorizing the mayor and clerk to enter into a multi-year competitively selected service contract with HNTB for construction management services for the East-West BRT line. President Abbas, a motion, please.
Move motion to adopt.
Second to adopt.
Moved and seconded to adopt. We'll do questions for staff. Alder Wahili.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just another similar questions as to the update about the bus rapid transit east and west. How is this affecting the transit design process and the ride shape? We have heard a lot of unhappy community that this is affecting the ride shape for the bus route. So if you can just walk us through the project and how it's, how is moving along and what's the, what's the challenges, but also how are you moving along with this BRT? Thanks. Especially is north and south? If you can include that, it would be great. Thanks.
Alder, I'm, I'm sorry. The item before us is a construction management contract for the east-west line. You have ample opportunity to connect with metro staff if you have questions about the north-south project, which isn't actually before the council in any way at this point, doesn't even exist as a thing, except in our dreams. So I invite you to do that and to spend more time with Justin on it, but that's really not a relevant question for the item that's before us tonight.
Okay, for the east, for the north and south, but then I'm still, would like to get update on the east and west, as it's the construction management for this project. So I have the right to hear any updates and any challenges and how the project is moving along.
On the east-west, absolutely.
Yes.
Sure, and Tom, if you want to chime in on anything, feel free. But so this is, this is part of a normal process in these projects. As you know, the east-west BRT was funded by council, and this is part of the process in moving that project forward. You know, the design work has been ongoing for a while, and this is the next of our major professional services contracts, the construction management, so that we can prepare for a construction bid at the end of this year. Basically, this contract would include everything from construction inspection through all of our compliance regulations through the Federal Transit Administration, include the bus inspections at the factories, review of the plans for constructability, discussions with vendors and contractors to try to bring more of them into the bidding process, and then outreach throughout the construction process, including, you know, people out walking the lines, talking, the line, talking to affected property owners and tenants about construction activities in their neighborhood, what's going to happen there and when, any disruptions or traffic, you know, considerations there might be. So, you know, that's this, that's this particular contract. You know, as far as the BRT project in general, you know, that's still moving along, you know, along according to schedule. And again, we hope to be in a position to be bidding the project at the end of the year.
And you talked about the construction, community relations, outreach, and public engagement. Can you talk more about how you're doing that?
Yeah, so a representative of the construction management team as part of this contract would be, you know, one individual or multiple will be responsible as the community liaison role. And essentially, what their job will be is to make contact with neighborhood organizations, businesses, property owners, tenants, anybody along the line who would be physically affected by the construction itself. And so, and coordinate with them and say, hey, you know, in a week, we're expecting these activities outside your front door, you may hear some noise, or we need to coordinate this drive- this driveway closure to put in a sewer main that will affect you, you know, on these days, does that work for you, do we need to adjust it? You know, that sort of, kind of, on-the-ground level of detail, coordination of the construction activities to ensure that we minimize the disruption to everyone along the corridor as much as possible.
And if I need to have an access to the project schedule and document support, is it in the website that I can find how the project's moving along?
Yeah, so there is some of that information online. If you want, you know, any more additional detail, we're happy to, you know, feel free to reach out, we're happy to provide that for you. We do expect, you know, as part of the construction, to have, you know, more and more detail available, including, you know, look-ahead schedules that we post on a website on a regular basis during construction, just so that everyone can see, you know, what's happening in the next few weeks, and everyone can be updated and have a handy reference there to get any of that information they need to during construction.
Thank you. And my final question is, as you move along with this project, do you see any challenges along the line with ride ship, as now we have the transit pre-designed project out there? So do you see any challenges as to having the BRT and the ride ship project to be in the same alignment, but more conflict in term of how you can be able to serve our residency?
I mean, there's always challenges with any of these projects, I mean, everything's difficult, but I don't see any specific challenges or concerns that we didn't expect.
Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Are there any other questions for staff? Seeing none, it's been moved and seconded. Alder Harrington McKinney.
Yes, I just wanted to put this in, and Justin, I really want to thank you for your statement in terms of considerations for the construction and the resident and the noise and access and all of those. That was good to hear, because oftentimes I've had so many complaints from residents that that was not a consideration, but because you put it out there that says that you are paying attention to the residents in the area with noise, construction, other kinds of disruptions, and I am really appreciative of hearing that, and I hope that that is consistent and you follow through on that. I just needed you to hear that. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder Harrington McKinney. It's been moved and seconded, is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in Seeing no objection, we'll record a unanimous vote in favor of item 70, and that will take us to item 90. Give me a second. Item 90 is Legisstar 69518, amending the official map to establish map reservations for future streets in the city of Madison to connect ShopCo Drive and Pancant Street, consistent with the recommendations in the adopted Oscar Meyer Special Area Plan. This is on for introduction. Current referrals are to Plan Commission on March 7th and Board of Public Works on March 2nd. So first, President Abass, a motion on item 90.
So the motion will be to refer?
The motion will be to introduce and refer.
Yep, okay, yeah. Move motion to introduce and refer.
Second to introduce and refer.
Motion is, and second, Alder Foster.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to add an additional referral to the Transportation Policy and Planning Board on the meeting of February 14th.
All right, so Alder Foster is asking for additional referral, and I'm sorry, Alder, the reason for the referral?
Yes, for the, to get recommendations from the Policy Board of Mapping.
Thank you. Just trying to follow the new rules. So let's try this, is there objection to adding that referral? Alder Harrington McKinney, is that an objection?
Madam Mayor, I am addressing this question to you. With the order of the referral, could that expand on why that referral to the Transportation, I think you said Transportation and Policy Board, but why that recommendation? I just want to follow the rationale for having this to go to another body?
Absolutely, Alder Harrington McKinney. Alder Foster, would you be willing to expand on the reason for referral?
Yes, thank you, Mayor, and thanks for the question, Alder. This is essentially similar to the zoning, proposed zoning changes that come out of our planning processes most recently. We're also seeing proposals to change the official map as it relates to transportation corridors. And so just like the Transportation Policy and Planning Board gets referrals for the plans to review in regards to the transportation elements, this would be sort of the formalization of recommendations from the plan. So that's the purpose is for the Transportation Policy and Planning Board to review the recommended updates, the official map, as it relates to future street mappings. And I believe President Abass, who is sponsor of this, consents to the additional referral as well.
Thank you, Alder. All right, so the motion is to adopt and refer, and unless there's objection, we'll include the referral to TPPB in that motion. Alder Wahili.
Was it supposed to be introduce and refer, or adopt and refer?
I'm sorry, introduced and refer.
Thank you.
Alder Harrington McKinney?
I'd like to be registered as a no.
All right, Alder Foster.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to point out it's the same sort of discussion for both items. I don't know if we have both in front of us, but I guess I'll leave that up to you, but it's the same discussion for the two.
I think at this point, we'll just take them one at a time, but thank you. I did see that coming. So, but on item 90, sorry, just to be clear, the motion is to introduce and refer to Plan Commission, Board of Public Works, and TPPB, with the exception of Alder Harrington McKinney, is there any objection to recording a vote in favor? Seeing no objection, I'll ask the clerk to record, Alder Harrington McKinney is voting no, and otherwise, ayes. Thank you. And then on item 91, we've practiced this, so now we should be good at it. Item 91 is Legislative File Number 69519, amending the city of Madison official map to establish mapped reservations for future streets in the city, consistent with recommendations with, in the adopted Oscar Meyer Special Area Plan. President Abass, a motion to introduce, and the referrals are Plan Commission on March 7th and Board of Public Works on March 2nd.
Yep, move a motion to introduce and refer to Plan Commission and Board of Public Works.
Second to introduce and refer.
Thank you. Alder Foster.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to add a referral to TPPB on February 14th.
Alder Foster requests a referral to the, is it February 14th, TPPB? Yes. Is there any objection to adding that referral to the motion? Alder Harrington McKinney. Objects, Alder Wahili.
The reason for referral for TPPB.
TPPB. Alder Foster, I believe it's the same reason as the previous item, it's a very similar So Alder Harrington McKinney, are you asking for a vote on the TPPB referral?
No, Madam Mayor, I just want to be registered as a no.
All right, the clerk will note that. So then, the motion before us is to introduce and refer to Plan Commission, Board of Public Works, and TPPB, with the note that Alder Harrington McKinney will be recorded as voting no, is there any objection to recording a vote in favor? Seeing no objection, Alder Wahili, sorry, no. All right, seeing no objection, we'll record that vote on item 91. And that brings us to the end of our agenda. I would like to wish a happy birthday to Alders Heck and Bennett in the near future. And round of applause there. And Alder Heck, I believe it is your turn.
I move to adjourn.
Somebody's got to second it.
Second.
It's moved and seconded to adjourn, is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor of adjournment? Seeing no objection, we stand adjourned. Thank you all, have a good night.